Okay, I want to welcome everybody to tonight's city council meeting. If you will all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Chris Peters. He's an associate pastor at Trinity Presbyterian Church.
Thank you. Let us pray. Creator God, today we are thankful for the beauty of this world and the wonder it inspires within us. And we are thankful too for the beauty of this community and the sense of pride it inspires as well. Help us, Fairhope Council and citizens alike, to be mindful stewards of this place and of all who live and work here. And this group of leaders encourage mindfulness of rich and poor, young and old, those who live downtown as well as on the edge of town. Shape this community with a sense of common purpose so that we may all live together in a spirit of peace and welcome. We ask these things with great hope in your steadfast love. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Peters. Counsel, I have a couple of items to discuss before we get to the agenda. I would like to walk onto the agenda, a resolution, awarding, an RFQ for the tent rentals for the New Year's Eve party. We could wait until the first meeting in December, but that's quite a ways off. And I think that these people, being that this would be on New Year's Eve, need to know whether or not they've been awarded this quote prior to. So, I believe Clerk has handed everyone a resolution that would award the RFQ to Blue Rents for the New Year's Eve tent rentals. If anybody has a problem with that, please let me know. If not, I would like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add the awarding of the RFQ. We would add that as item seventeen.
Counsel President, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to add the resolution to award the tent rental to Blue Rents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any final discussion on that? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of amending the agenda to add the tent resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the agenda has been amended. That will be item seventeen, just before the final public participation. We do have one other item to discuss whether or not we will remove it or not, but we can discuss that when we get to that item. Okay, first item on tonight's agenda would be to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings that were held on November the thirteenth. Anybody have any additions, changes, or deletions to those minutes? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. That's amended.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, the minutes are approved. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. For those who have not heard my voice before now, I feel fine, but I had laryngitis. First, I wanted to say that this year's lighting of the trees was a great success. For the first time, we outsourced the project, and I realize some folks were worried about the practicality of doing so. Here's what we gained by relieving our electrical department of the massive, months-long task of trimming our trees for our special event season. We finished Gafer Road and County Road thirteen roundabout, replaced several priority rotten poles, were able to continue replacing several transmission poles with woodpecker damage, have been able to keep up with large amounts of new construction taking place, replaced a transmission switch which was not mechanically sound, had the crew to spare to send Orlando and Lakewood, Florida, to assist after the hurricane. That alone, the department felt, was worth the contract labor because one day we will need the assistance in recovery work. The members of this department told me they were glad to be able to continue with their daily and growing workload while the lights were being installed, to be able to keep as a priority their responsibility of always providing Fairhope with the safest and most reliable electrical service possible. Last Tuesday, Representatives from Goma Technical Assistance Grant toured with us at the Fairhope docks to get a hands-on look at our marina and the issues we are faced from years of neglect, also from damage from Hurricane Nate. The grant we were awarded will help us take the right steps in developing a clean marina. It was a very productive meeting. The next step will be first draft renderings of potential layouts of the marina and boatyard facilities. We have been officially advised that FEMA has declared us eligible for disaster funds. Between FEMA and the state, we will have eighty-seven point five percent of our recovery costs reimbursed. Public Works already has a plan in place and is ready to start work on repairing all city peers that were destroyed during Nate, as well as the Fairhope docks. We expect to be able to mitigate future damage by applying resilient techniques during the repair work. I've reported before on the NOAA grants monies we received for the Tainanville watershed study. We were just advised that NOAA will be doing a three-part documentary video reflecting our work. At its October twenty-third meeting, the council had passed a resolution authorizing mobile baykeepers to conduct a hundred and forty-four tests on Fly Creek, looking at levels of optical brighteners at a cost of sixty-five hundred dollars. The city has an ongoing water testing program in place right now, which is capable of conducting tests anywhere at any time, whenever requests happen. To match what Baykeeper was hired to do, we would have to purchase another incubator for a total of twenty-five hundred dollars. Baykeeper is charging forty-five dollars per test. With the purchase of these two pieces of equipment, the city can conduct the same tests for twenty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents per test, and that cost includes the price of the two pieces of equipment. This is a day-to-day business effort, and had council ask us what they were looking for, we could have provided the testing and information and informed our testing capabilities into the future for almost three thousand dollars less than Baykeeper. And we would have improved our capabilities for testing well into the future. It's just, again, a lack of communication and decisions being made without the right people at the table. Every year, we give our volunteers, and Jeff, if you could help me with this on the screen, volunteers have been getting a Christmas decoration. And this year, we wanted to do something different. We have put together a wall calendar. That's going to be the front of it, and we filled it with photographs from talented local photographers. So every month, they will be reminded of our gratitude for their services. The calendar turned out so well that we are printing more, and the Booster Club will be selling, using a hundred percent of the donations to use as part of their fundraising. As soon as we have all of the information about how much they'll be sold for, again, this is going to be all from the Booster Club, we will share it on our website and Facebook. I want to send a special thank you to John Oldshue for facilitating the calendar and gathering all of the photos. Each and every one of them, to me, have been, they're just spectacular, and I wish I had the list of all the photographers, but it will be on the back of the calendar. I think that's J.D. Crowe's. But anyway, thirteen remarkable photographs. They will be in this calendar, and it'll be for our volunteers and fundraising efforts from Booster Club. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Next item is public participation item, public participation for agenda items only. If you would like to address the council concerning items five through seventeen, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Gary Gover. I live at three hundred Lincoln Street in Fairhope. I'd like to make some comments on agenda item number nine, an ordinance to amend ordinance number twelve sixty-six, garbage and trash collection and disposal. First thought I had was that the ordinance would set rates for all garbage customers, residential and commercial. The background material for the ordinance primarily addresses residential garbage collection and disposal and provides little analysis of commercial customer services. It doesn't seem to provide a good basis for the recommended setting of the commercial Secondly, the ordinance would continue our twice-a-week garbage collection. The other local governments in our area generally provide once-a-week service. Gulf Shores offers a choice of once- or twice-a-week service at different rates. I'd like to see us consider once-a-week service or a choice of once- or twice-a-week service. Once-a-week service seems to offer something that would provide a significant opportunity for cost savings. Thirdly, residential customers have a choice of using forty-eight, or sixty-four, or ninety-six gallon garbage carts. I'd like to see us have a rate plan that offers a saving to residents who use smaller Fourthly, residential customers have the choice of recycling a portion of their waste. I, for example, recycle most of the waste for my household of four people. I produce only five gallons of garbage a week. This reduces the cost for the city. It would be equitable if my garbage rate were reduced because I recycle, or because I use a small garbage cart, or because I put my garbage out much less than twice a week. I'd like to recommend that we do more with the garbage rate plan in order to reduce costs of city operations and costs to the customers and to provide better equity for efficient households. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gover. Floor still open?
Matt McCauley, Tin Wood Grove Circle, Fairhope. At an earlier meeting, I spoke about the change in the downtown business district, item eight on the agenda, and there was a discussion that followed about changing it in some way to exclude something to do with residential properties. I wasn't clear on it. But I'm here to just remind you that based on the recent Supreme Court decision, if you make any changes to the original advertised ordinance, you can't vote on it tonight. So I presume that what I see here is that you're going to vote tonight on the original ordinance and not the changed ordinance.
Not necessarily. We will, if you'll stay, I'll answer your question. If we voted all, it will be as it was introduced and advertised. If we decide to go in a different direction, that item will be pulled from the agenda entirely and re-advertised. Okay? Okay, I'll close public participation for agenda items and move to council comments. Councilman Robinson?
Yeah, I just want to say I hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving holiday break, and then I'd like to remind everybody to come out for the Fairup Christmas Parade, which is this Friday night, starting at seven PM, and we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Conner?
Just a few updates on committee meetings. We've got the Historic Preservation Committee meeting Thursday, December seventh, at nine thirty. That's at the Fairup History Museum. Environmental Advisory Board meeting should be Friday, December eighth, at three PM in the Dell Champs Room. And the next Library Board meeting is scheduled for Monday, December eighteenth, at five PM at the library. And Library would like to remind everyone that the Chocolate and Champagne Party, which is coming up in late January, tickets will be available beginning December eleventh. So come out and support the library.
Thank you. Councilman Brown?
No comment.
Councilman Boone?
Actually, the only comment I'm going to make is to support the process of everybody coming out for the Christmas parade. It's a lot of fun for everybody, especially for the kids, and I always enjoy it, and I like to see a big crowd out there. So I really hope everybody does come out and enjoy themselves on our Christmas parade Friday night. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Boone. I just had one quick comment. I want to address the mayor's concern over the cost of the water testing. I know that she had made a comparison between the cost of the test, doing it in-house, and what we're paying mobile baykeepers to do this testing, and I appreciate that, being conscious about how much money we spend. But I do want to know if the cost that you included for in-house, did that include our labor cost as we so highly touted for saving money and putting up the lights on the trees? And also, did it factor in that you're pulling employees away from their day-to-day duties to do yet another duty, which was also touted during the lighting of trees? I just, I don't necessarily need an answer, but I wanted to know if that really included all of the cost of that. And maybe it's very miniscule. It may be, maybe it adds twenty cents per test, but I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
The testing that mobile baykeeper is doing is just on Fly Creek, and this is actually not one of the priorities as far as where we know sewers overflow. We could have added this very easily to the testing we're already doing. This is not eliminating us doing our testing that we already do. This would just be adding another location. So it would be inconsequential.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor. With that, I'll close council comments. We'll move to item five on the agenda, which is the final adoption of an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number twelve fifty-three. This is a request to zone the property of Todd Roberts to R2 medium-density single-family residential district concurrent with annexation to the city of Fairhope. The property is generally located at nineteen eight seventy County Road thirteen, known as parcel B, Fairhope, Alabama. Mr. Dias?
Thank you, Council President. I'll be brief. The property, as described, it's one point zero four acres, again, northeast corner of County Road thirteen and Twin Beach. The Planning Commission recommended approval. Staff concurs that recommendation, condition on the annexation being adopted by the city council, and also, there'll be a common lot line movement that's associated with this also. But again, staff does recommend approval. The requested zoning is R2, which is consistent with the zoning of the surrounding property. If you look at your map in your packet, you'll see that. So this is a very consistent zoning and very ordinary. Be glad to answer any questions.
Was that a unanimous recommendation?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
Any questions for Mr. Dias, counsel? Hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, will you call out the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Item number six is a final adoption to amend zoning ordinance number twelve fifty-three. This is a request to rezone the property of Sweetwater Investments LLC from R2 medium-density single-family residential district to B4 business and professional district. This property is generally located at two zero zero four zero State Highway one eighty-one in Fairhope, Alabama. This was introduced at the November thirteenth city council meeting.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Again, one point three one acres, requesting B4 from the current R2 zoning. This was recommended by approval by the Planning Commission, also staff, and that sums it up. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions, counsel? Was that also unanimous?
Yes, sir, I believe. I don't have the vote tally in here, but I don't recall there being any opposition to it.
All right, counsel. Hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second for final adoption. Any final comments or questions? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, will you call out the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number seven is final adoption of an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number twelve fifty-three. This would be zoning ordinance amendment, Article nine, Section C, and definitions pertaining to the building height. This changes the definition of the building height in that the vertical distance measured from the average natural elevation of the lot to the mean point of the roof of the building. This was also introduced at the last city council meeting. Mr. Dias?
Thank you, Council President. Again, as was mentioned, this is to change the definition, a slight change of how it's measured. The proposal we have is very consistent with just about every zoning ordinance I'm aware of, especially in the county and the cities in the county. And again, the Planning Commission recommended approval, and staff concurs that recommendation.
Any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for final adoption. Any final comments, discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, will you call out the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Okay, item eight. As Mr. McCauley pointed out in the public participation, he is exactly correct, that if we were to change this ordinance in any way, that would have to be re-advertized. We cannot vote on that. However, if we decide to vote on this as it was introduced at the last council meeting, which was the way it was published, we could vote on that tonight. And with your help, Mr. Dias, I'll try to tell you what I know of this. As it was presented, it simply stated under item four, Part D, no parking is required for non-residential uses in the CBD. If parking is provided, it shall be located behind the building screen from public rights way and have a direct pedestrian connection to the primary building entrance of the public right-of-way. Residential in office is not encouraged on the upper floors of buildings. Lower floors are encouraged to be retail or restaurants. As it is proposed to be changed, which you would not be able to vote on tonight, there is item one under parking, which is as it was stated under the introduced and published. There is an item two that says dwelling units in the CBD shall provide the required parking. It shall be located behind the building screen from public rightsway and have a direct pedestrian connection to the primary building entrance of the public right-of-way. And then there is an item three, which was the old item two, residential offices encouraged on the upper floors. Lower floors are encouraged to be retail or restaurants. Counsel, we can have a quick discussion as to which way you would like this to go, if you would like to go. And let me, let's hear from Mr. Dias as to why these changes are being proposed and hear his commentary.
Thank you, Council President. The boundaries of CBD, we looked at, there's some areas of the CBD that are established residential areas, which the CBD is much more geared toward the central business district for businesses and retail. So there's been some slight alterations of taking out some of the more established neighborhoods. We have increased it to areas that have current commercial uses and could be potentially viable for redevelopment to some other commercial uses. So this is, in a way, in trying to encourage some redevelopment of some areas that are probably underutilized as far as the buildings and those kind of things. And then also, the extension out Fairup Avenue back to the east, that's sort of a natural gateway into downtown. As you come down the hill, it's residential, and you open up into a commercial area where the hardware store is and the mini storage and the post office. That was a sort of a natural gateway. And again, trying to extend the CBD out to that area, again, to potentially spur some additional maybe reinvestments in that area, and also improve the streetscape of that by having the buildings and the mixed use. Speaking to the mixed use, right now, to do mixed use, you have to have parking for that. So if you have a dwelling unit, you're going to have parking. There's a great deal of the properties in downtown do not have the ability, because of space, to have parking. I think trying to encourage mixed use in the CBD, and it does a couple of things. I think it also makes the CBD more vibrant, more activity. Where there's more activity, there's more uses and more pleasing environment, more inviting environment for the pedestrian experience. That was one, again, one of the primary factors in removing that requirement for the parking. Now, I will tell you, I have had some feedback. There's people who were concerned about that. I'll be very open about that, and that's one of the reasons why at the last meeting we discussed potentially holding that item until we finish the wayfinding program so we can identify the parking maybe a little better. There's a lot of parking out there that I think sometimes are hidden, and you don't really know where they are. Parking deck is one example of that, but also parking across from school is another example of that. So from that perspective, you know, that was a concern. I will tell you, I don't know of any planned new mixed-use facilities. I'm not sure, you know, as far as what's down the pike, but I don't know of any. So I don't know if that's an immediate threat right now. Somebody could come in tomorrow. I don't know, but as far as my knowledge of projects that are beginning to start, I don't know of any that's mixed-use that hasn't gained approval. You have one out Fairup Avenue, which has already gained approval. That's already been approved several months ago, so that wouldn't be affected for that one, except if they wanted to amend their plans. As far as the height, we are proposing to increase the height to no more than three stories at forty feet. Again, some of the feedback we got was that to do the height, you have to have nine-foot ceilings inside. That was not, nine-foot ceilings are not really that attractive to some, and it did limit the ability to design some buildings that were architecturally good and have character to them. And again, that was just a method to try to, again, encourage a better design, more creative design, which, an effort to improve the streetscape, which also improves the pedestrian experience and also spurs additional investment in downtown, and also make those shops that are there maybe a little vibrant and more appealing to shoppers. That's kind of sums it up, I guess.
Questions for Mr. Dias, counsel?
Wayne, is there any, I guess what we're considering is voting on it as it was originally posted without this number two, or without this number two, which is removed, as originally posted, would remove the requirement for residential units downtown to provide required parking. Is there any reason for us to, any rush to vote on this tonight, or is there, are we able to, in your opinion, repost it and take the time to advertise it as we have it in the package today?
You know, as far as waiting, I mean, again, I would never want to rush into something if you don't, if the council doesn't feel comfortable with that, I would not want to rush into it. There may be some projects out there that would benefit from this that maybe are sort of in a holding pattern. I don't know. They can speak to that themselves. I don't see, there's nothing that's absolutely pressing about this. I think this is, in my opinion, is a good measure, but again, I don't want to rush into it. If there's concern, I'd much rather be, try to discuss those concerns with the affected parties and try to get their feedback and maybe try to make sure we understand what we're trying to achieve with this. So to answer your question, nothing, this is not urgent. I mean, there's no, there's no pressing need from our end. Again, there are some projects out there that I think that are waiting for this. They want to get the benefits from this, and I think those would be better projects with this, obviously. But again, from the planning perspective, these are long-term measures. We're looking for long-term effects, and there's nothing that's absolutely pressing tonight.
Well, and I guess my next question would be, I mean, and obviously, each project would have to address it theirself, but I mean, if we're voting on it as a whole piece, you know, one thing being the height, one of the changes being the height requirement, which I think is, in my personal opinion, is okay, but if what we're having to vote on is without the required residential parking, then that changes it for me.
Right. And at the last meeting, you know, my thoughts were, we would just remove that portion, that residential parking portion, from the equation, and we'll just handle that differently. But I think with the Supreme Court ruling, it kind of put that in jeopardy. It's not, it's not as easy now to just remove a section from consideration, which I think, again, forces us, as Councilman Burrell alluded to, forces us into going back into re-advertize exactly what we want to adopt. And so that's where I think the rub comes in with this one.
You're probably going to see a lot of agey opinions coming out on this as well. If you're just simply removing something and everything else was the same, then you'll have the question of, well, we were changing one item. I could see the challenge to that, or adding something. That's obvious that you could challenge that if you were adding something to this. But if you were just removing a component and everything was the same, I don't want to be the guinea pigs, but you'll see some challenges to that, I'm sure.
Mm-hmm.
to be the guinea pigs, but you'll see some challenges to that, I'm sure, in the future.
Yeah, because we're actually lessening the request. We're not adding to it. We're taking something off the table.
Wayne, what is the current, if the parking requirement was in there for residences, what is that requirement?
I think it's one per unit for mixed use.
One per unit?
I believe so, yes.
So the difference is, right now, is if you have a mixed use, you have, in the CBD, you, it's currently required to have one parking space per unit. And this, as introduced and published, would not require that.
Yeah.
Kind of gets down to what you're trying to encourage. You know, you're trying to encourage revitalizing, you know, the central business district with mixed use, or you want to kind of maintain the status with providing the parking?
Yeah, well, does that, I mean, but my question would be, does requiring the one spot per unit really chill that? I mean, I don't know that it does. I mean...
Chill what?
Chill the desire to make or create mixed use. I mean, if you've got four units and you've got to provide four parking spaces, is that really enough of a problem to say, well, I'm not going to do it? I don't think it is.
Probably depends on where your property is situated.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's project-dependent, but at the same time, do we, you know, I mean, if somebody's got the available space to make parking, do we really want to say, well, you don't have to anymore? I mean, maybe, in my opinion, I don't think we should. I think, I mean, as much as we discuss parking and finding new ways to create it, I don't know that we should be doing anything to eliminate the requirements to provide it, in my personal opinion.
I think these are great points. You know, one thing we may want to consider is doing a parking analysis and have that sort of a question that is answered during your site plan approval, if that's something that's a concern. If there's, if it's an area that has an abundance of parking nearby, maybe that's something that should be a factor that...
That maybe we could change, I mean, keeping the requirement in the ordinance and then maybe specifically addressing it on a project-by-project basis.
Right. Because there may be some areas where the parking congestion is not as great. That's speculation. That's just a thought as we stand here.
But it doesn't seem like it's that much of a negative impact if you didn't have a parking space per unit. Because I know, I mean, there seems to be plenty of parking downtown. It's just people being directed to it, which I think is going to be covered more in the wayfinding. I mean, I was able to find a parking spot in the parking deck during lighting of the trees, and I got there kind of at the last minute. So it seems like even at the busiest, we've always got some parking available.
And the concern that was expressed to me was, was that, you know, it's already congested downtown with parking. You have some of the dwelling unit, they could potentially have that car parked there 24 hours.
If you increase the building height, you're going to increase the value of that property. If you go up three stories, you're going to see much more mixed use, and you're going to see people parking in front of businesses, which are going to upset business owners because that person is not going to require, be required to park any particular place. They can park right in front of that mixed-use building. I think that's the concern. And I do think that with the other components of this ordinance, you're going to see a higher demand for, you know, going vertical in downtown. You just made that plan a lot more...
Well, I mean, and on top of that, I mean, what if you have two or three people living in each develop, each unit? And you've got four units, and you've got 12 people parking that have never parked there before, that take up a space, I mean, it's not one car, it's not two cars. It's, what if they have people coming over to visit? I mean, it's exponential. And if you, if they're, and like Jack's saying, if they're more valuable and they're more popular and become more abundant downtown, that's more people and more parking and more issues.
And one thing to consider as well about parking is, as has been alluded to, as you make it more economically viable, you could potentially see more parking on the first, I mean, you have a building that's 40 feet tall, but the first floor is dedicated to parking. Or at least the first back of the building. The storefront would still be in the front, but...
I would love to see the city come up with a way to make parking credits available. And I'm just going to, don't take this as what, you know, I'm proposing this now, but just as a shooting from the hip, if someone wanted to invest in, say, a parking place in the parking garage, they could invest in that. We could essentially sell them a place. They can use any place in the parking garage, but that money can be reinvested for more parking.
Right, I think it's a great idea.
Maybe one way to solve that issue. But we would need to have that plan in place before we did that.
Right.
I want to yield a little bit of time. Councilman Brown may be aware, we do have, you know, I want to consider him an expert on the subject matter, and I want to yield some time to this gentleman to come up and speak. Because this, we got to get this right. Mr. Walcott?
This modification that's been discussed for a couple of months now, the experiment of inducing mixed use by requiring residential be in certain locations in the buildings, one of the observations that in 10 years, it hadn't, it hadn't generated that outcome. So part of the discussion was build a building, let the use of it evolve over the life of a building. In the first 10 years of the building, there may be only offices there. In the second 10 years, there may be residential. It's an interesting discussion about what developers see in our ordinances and what they, what they, what the values created by changing some of these things. I think the timing part of it is by allowing the 40 feet and allowing the flexibility of whether or not to put a residential unit in there is generating a lot of interest. And I think that's good because I hear more people say downtown condominiums and count them for me. Something about our town does not make them easy to do. It could be parking, it could be lot size or whatever. And so the question I look at is, what are we, you know, my take for most of these is, if they don't have off-street parking, they won't do the development. They forget what the ordinance says. They're going to make their own business decision that I need off-street parking to either serve my business footprint or my residential footprint. So the timing part, I would only say to you, I've just, I've had a couple of people inquire over the last couple of months, say, what will this do if this is passed? And they're interested in seeing some resolution to it. So that's y'all's choice. But I think it's a, I support it because it gives some logic of how we use our buildings. The off-street parking requirement, if you think about Fairhope, there's a few big lots downtown. There's a lot of tiny lots. Those are, unless somebody can come in and agglomerate those lots into bigger footprints, it's not really economically feasible to take a 40-foot lot and try and do off-street parking. So those probably take care of themselves. So, I mean, I was excited, the height, that's going to give us some better choices for Class A space, which is what, I see more interest in Class A space downtown than I do residential, is what I'm seeing. So I hope y'all can take action on it.
Thank you, Mr. Walcott. Councilman, any more comments?
I mean, I just, you know, my personal feeling is, I am in favor of the changing the height requirement or the height restrictions, but I personally am not in favor of eliminating the required parking. So I personally would like to see us re-advertise it as we discussed in last time, in our meeting two weeks ago, and then have it voted on as it reads in the ordinance today, as opposed to what was originally proposed, which eliminated the requirement for residential parking.
I agree with you, Councilman Robinson. Okay, with that, if there are no more comments, I'm going to ask for a motion for final adoption as it was introduced and published.
I'll make a motion?
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance as introduced and published. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clark, will you call a question?
Council president?
Nay.
Place two?
Nay.
Place three?
Yes.
Place four?
Yay.
Place five?
Nay.
Okay, motion fails. Councilman Boone, could I ask you if you would have support for that ordinance as suggested by Councilman Robinson? So we could get staff to rewrite that and get that advertised?
Yes.
Would you vote yes for that?
Uh-huh.
Would you?
I would.
I would.
That's three votes.
I would still support that.
You would still support it? Okay.
And that is, and what you're saying is what I suggested, which is the amendment for the, all the amendments in the, this ordinance stay the same, except for we continue to include a requirement for residential dwellings to provide required parking.
Exactly. The strike-through portion, we will remove that strike-through, and we'll go with the current language that's there now that we've been operating under.
Correct.
And move forward with that and re-advertise it.
Yes.
Yeah, under D, the D would be dimension standards, Part Four, which is Part Four, D 123, as in a proposed change.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
I had a quick question. Is there a requirement for parking for anything other than residential? Do we have to have required parking?
No, no. If you're doing retail downtown, there's no required parking. The only thing that we have required for downtown currently is for residential. But if you build a new commercial building and so forth, there is required parking. Now, one thing I want to make, I need to mention as well, is that because down Farough Avenue, there's no on-street parking. We do have, in the language we have right now, there is a requirement for your parking analysis and a parking study to be submitted in conjunction with your site plan. So the council can make that decision as the appropriate parking there. And that's really geared towards, for example, you have different peak parking times for restaurants as you do office. Office peak time is daytime, restaurants' peak time is at nighttime. And to avoid, just to see a parking by making them submit, making them design parking with the maximum extent for each use, we can do some shared parking arrangements, which is something that's very beneficial. It cuts down on the cost of asphalt, cost of parking, cost of runoff, but also you're more efficiently utilizing the parking that's provided. And that's in the current draft, and so we'd like to keep that as well.
I guess one last comment I'd just throw out there, you know, who would you think would use more parking? A second or third-floor office or a second or third-floor residence?
Well, I think when you look at more, you've got to look at the time of parking need. And I mean, obviously...
Nine to five.
Nine to five would be, obviously, the office would probably be more because some may be working, living, but working somewhere else, leaving their vehicles. But from the standpoint of parking 24/7, obviously, the residents would be there weekends and so on.
Yeah, weekends and prime shopping times in downtown Fairhope.
Right.
The weekends would be more heavily congested for residential.
Right.
But what he's saying is, if it was office space during the weekdays, the office space would be taking up prime parking during the weekdays.
Right, but that's no different than what's already there. That's not, I mean, that exists as it is today. That's not changing the rules.
In theory, if you had retail parking only, you'd have a lot of turnover. People would be parking for a couple hours and leaving, and, you know, that's purely for retail. That'd be a much higher turnover, much space is easier to find. When you introduce uses that are not the retail in nature, restaurants are retail, you do have a longer period of parking time, usually in those parking spots.
I think you have an easier time enforcing if we were to, whether it be metered parking, and please don't quote me, but I'm suggesting it.
When you give the study...
Sometime in the future, if you have to enforce parking time, it's going to be a lot easier to do that on retail.
No question.
Commercial clients, as opposed to someone that's living there that's going to park their car, and their antique car out there on the street and just leave it and say, hey, I bought this place and this was the rule. It's going to be very hard to enforce. We could have that issue.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item number nine is an ordinance to amend, ordinance number 1266. In the Fairhope Code of Ordinances, Article Six, Garbage and Trash Collection and Disposal, Section 21-75. In the exercise of police powers of the city and for the purpose of enabling the city to perform a governmental function, there is hereby fixed the following garbage service fees for every occupant within the city. Clark, I don't know if that's the right language on this agenda. Did you have that? Yeah. So that should be on the agenda. It said rates will increase $1 per month each year for three consecutive years, beginning 2018, and shall go into effect the first billing cycle after January 1 of each year, beginning January 2018 and ending January 2020 for all customers, residential and commercial. Now, you should have also been given a list of fees and media. I want to offer this to you. We are looking at something different than what's in the package. So if anyone would like a copy of this, Mr. Gove, if you'd like a copy of this, if he's still here. These are slightly different. Basically, for residential customers, you're seeing a dollar per year or per month increase each year in 2018, 2019, and 2020. And because we don't have the array of garbage cans sizes that were listed in the prior ordinance, it just says a base rate for non-residential customers for 1 to 96-gallon receptacles. That was based on the old 90-gallon rate of 17.25. It would go to 18.25, 19.25, and 20.25. And for each additional 96-gallon receptacle, it would be $5. So the example given there is if you have three, you would pay 18.25 plus 10, or 28.25. And that would go up $1 per year for the following two years. So those were the changes that are being proposed. This is a type of ordinance that is advertised after the fact, not prior to, so nothing is being violated. This has not been introduced yet. So I would like for someone to, if you so choose, to introduce the ordinance as you have in front of you. Someone like to introduce that ordinance?
Hang on one second. Let me make sure I understand this.
Sure.
You said $1 per year.
I'm sorry, $1 per month.
And it's written down that way. So I'm making sure we actually are doing it per, $1 per month.
Well, no, I read it, I read it per month each year.
Right.
Yeah, it's written down on the agenda.
That's how we're doing it. $1 per month.
Correct.
Yeah. The agenda, the ordinance that I handed you prior to the meeting shows actually the breakdown of the month, the monthly rate, which is correct. That's the actual ordinance. Has it actually per rate placed on the date?
Yes.
So, yeah, the description on the agenda was incorrect, but I thought I had changed it properly. Any other questions on there?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, the ordinance has been introduced. Mr. Johnson?
Yes, sir, council president's member of the council. This has been a process that has been under discussion, not only through the financial advisory committee, but the mayor's office, as well as Public Works through their division of solid waste. And I'm having a little trouble with the terminology, too. It is, it is a dollar increase for each month for 12 months, and then a dollar increase for each month for 12 months. So I think it is a dollar per month, but it's not, it's not going up $12 in a year. So it's just going up $1 for a year, and then an additional dollar the next year, and an additional dollar the next year. So right now, our current rate is $12.80, so meaning that when the first full cycle of billing in January 1, if this moves forward, it would go to $13.80 per month for the next 12 months. Then it would go to $14.80 on January of 2018, 19, excuse me, for 12 months, and then ultimately reside at $15.80 starting January 1, 2020. So hopefully, that's clarification. On the non-residential or the commercial accounts, if you look at the old reference ordinance that was passed in 2005, first of all, it is offering services that we really don't offer anymore because we don't have that size receptacle. We are, we're pretty much at a 64 or 96-gallon cart, and there's not too many commercial accounts that want the small carts. They need the bigger ones. So generally, we will be glad to provide them a 64, but we're basing everything else on an average of the 96-gallon cart. And the thing that we talked about is, on our commercial accounts, we take care of them as they need to be taken care of. The minimum that they're, and in both cases, we're still twice a week service. Nothing's changing there as a minimum for non-residential. And then it is a case-by-case basis, but what we're trying to do to make this cleaner and easier to bill and easier for a business to do a calculation of how they want their service, it is not based upon cycles. It's based upon number of containers that they need to service their business. And we tried to find a spot that would keep that in, pretty much in line with the typical business customer is using. In some cases, some of the businesses may come out a little bit better with this in the short run, but with the $1 increase, that will get covered as well. A couple of things to think about, and let me kind of tell you the future. Technology is getting so good and so cheap. Right now, the auto trucks that we're using already has all the technology on it with a few additional appliances added to it, that we eventually will be able to convert to a weight-based system. to a weight-based system. Meaning that today, Toter for $5 upcharge sells cans with a chip in it, or they'll sell you actually a sticker that you stick on it, that when that can is serviced, that truck knows whose can it is, what address, what customer, and it weighs as it picks it up. So I think the next time we have a discussion about garbage rates, three or four or five years, we're gonna talk about a weight-based system, meaning that the customer pays for what they use. And I think that is equitable. But right now, we don't have all that in place to do that. And here's the reality. The cost in solid waste operation is getting the truck to the customer, not what's in there. The cost to service five gallons of garbage or 96 gallons of garbage is pretty much the same because the expenses, the employee, the equipment, and the travel time and the cost to get there. Because really, the least amount of cost associated with garbage is the $30 a ton for landfill. When you look at it as the controlling factor of cost, it's not. It's all the other, the fuel, the labor, the overhead, the equipment maintenance, all that. But we will be able to say, this is what a ton of solid waste cost us to process in the City of Fairhope. And then you figure up from that cost what your cost per pound to service it is, and everybody pays their equal share. And that technology is here, many municipalities are using it, and that, you're talking about the ultimate goal in encouraging people in a polite way to recycle. All of a sudden, there's an economic incentive for them to recycle because the least they put in their garbage receptacle, the least they play that month.
Jimmy, don't take your garbage to Jay's house and put it in that one.
But we're not there yet, but that is, that is a vision for operations in the future that's very equitable, and the cost of that technology, the trucks already have all of the equipment on it. Trucks already actually know the weight of the can going up because it has a refusal weight that it won't pick up. So I think we can get there one day. We're not there yet, but I did appreciate the gentleman's comment, and I appreciate that.
It was good questions.
Yes, sir.
You know, I want to say something also, counsel, is that, you know, that one option was that we could have raised it, it was proposed to be raised $3 in this year, and I thought that was fairly excessive. And in this way, it kind of meters it out over a few years. The other thing is that these rates haven't been increased since 2005. And, I mean, your fast food hamburger's probably gone up 25 cents a year or more since then. And if we had just, if fees had just trickled up at just a quarter a year, we'd be at the same price. Actually, in three years, we'd be less than that, I mean, more than that, so.
And I think it deserves to be pointed out that even, even at the three-year increase, even at the $15.80, Fairhope is still providing a better service at two times a week than most other Baldwin County municipalities are providing at one day a week for a lower price.
Absolutely.
Even if we did one day a week, we would still be lower-
Right.
-than all the municipalities, but we're actually picking it up twice.
Correct.
Twice the service for-
For the same price or less.
No more than cost, right?
Yes, sir.
Probably less than most, right?
We're still below that meeting in the county.
Still below the meeting, that's what I thought. Okay, excellent.
Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, the ordinance has been introduced. Clerk, do we have to suspend with the rules to vote on this tonight?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Counsel, we can let this lay over to the next meeting, or if somebody wants to entertain, I'll entertain a motion to suspend with the rules and vote for immediate consideration.
I'll entertain a motion to suspend with the rules.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second to suspend with the rules and vote on this immediately. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of suspending with the rules? I gotta do an ordinance. Okay, I know, go ahead.
Council President, please do.
Uh, nay.
Don't need to go further.
Yeah, needs to be unanimous for immediate consideration. So it was layover to the next meeting. All right, moving on. Item 10 is the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of Neptune Water Meters for the Water Department from Consolidated Pipe and Supply Company Incorporated as sole-source provider in the state of Alabama for Neptune Technology Group Incorporated. Number of units we need is 72 at $175 per unit at a cost not to exceed $12,600. Entertain a motion, resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for purchase of the meters. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of the purchase, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Item 11 is a resolution at the City of Fairhope vote for the procurement of maintenance service of oil in the two-three-phase substation power transformers located on Nickel Street and Fairhope Avenue for the Electric Department at a total cost of $14,000. Mr. Peterson?
Uh, Joe?
Okay. Could you explain this for us? It's a little different.
This is a maintenance process to remove moisture content in the oil of those two transformers.
Has this been done before? I just don't recall.
Hmm, well, when the oil test results come back and the moisture content level is high, we have to react to that and get the moisture out. So it's based on, you know, old DGA results.
Okay.
Does not set on a regular maintenance schedule, it's just as needed?
Well, the testing is, but being proactive with the results.
Gotcha.
Depends on the results.
Is that testing then? Didn't we approve that recently? Isn't that pretty?
Correct.
So for years, we weren't testing it, and we may have had a high moisture content and didn't know it?
Well, I believe we were testing it, but we didn't have high moisture content levels.
Oh, okay. All right, good. All right. Any other questions, Joe? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for procurement.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, motion's approved. Thank you, counsel. Item 12 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to procure a sewer line camera system for the Sewer Department, which is budgeted in the FY 2018 proposed budget. The total cost is $7,749. Mr. McCroy? I'll just ask you before you get up here, is that in lieu, don't we sub this out right now, part of it?
Currently, in the proposed budget, there's two cameras in there. The one we're asking for tonight is a very small camera that usually we do small work with. The one we currently have was bought in 1999, and it is currently, it is way past the end of its life and has died on it. So right now, I'm kind of running in the blind. The other camera that we have in there is to do actual sewer line, that we can go from manhole to manhole. We, if we change the tires on it, we can also do storm drains on it also. So that's, that's not the one that's in there, it's the one you got in here.
But this is replacing one that's been in use now.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we bought that one in 1999. Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. McCroy?
No, but I can just say that these things are extremely valuable to the sewer company. In my business, we use, try to use them all the time. So they need to be, if they're not updated, they need to be updated to stay in line with what the sewer pipes and what have.
In the pest control business?
No, I used to be in the sewer business for about 35 years. I did this from time to time.
Picking on you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to purchase this camera.
So moved.
Second. Two motions in two seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, counsel.
Two thank yous. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Item 13 is a resolution, the City of Fairhope vote to purchase a mini excavator, a 2017 CAT 302.7D, to be shared by all utilities. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the National Joint Powers Alliance Buying Group, and therefore, does not have to be let out for bid. The bid has been nationally, it has been nationally bid through the NJPH bid process, a total cost of $35,173.48, which I will point out to you, counsel.
$25,000 under budget.
You got it. Any questions for Mr. Peterson or Joe or Dan for this equipment? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for this purchase.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Item 14 is a resolution, the Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract with SEA Entertainment Booking Agency for the band known as B Street Benny for the New Year's Eve Downtown Celebration, with a cost not to exceed $5,000. Entertain a motion for this, hiring this band?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of hiring the band, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Item 15 is a resolution, the City Council approves the selection of Chapman Inspection Services for professional inspection services of a 2 million gallon water tank for the Water Department, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute the associated contract with a not-to-exceed limit of $10,500. And counsel, I'll try to take this one real quick. Mr. Peterson's the engineer of record. Typically, professional services runs anywhere from 10% to 15%, which would be for this contract, anywhere from $100,000 to $150,000. We're not paying that, but Mr. Peterson does need somebody to inspect to make sure that they're doing this job correctly. It is a lot more, I've read, you know, some social media comments about why are we spending so much? And if you don't know much about painting a water tower, that's a very valid question, but I can tell you the superstructure in that water tower is enormous, and it is a big job, and we need to have an inspector there to make sure that they're doing it the right way. So, did I get all that right, Mr. Peterson?
Right.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to hire, or to allow the mayor to select Chapman Inspection Services.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, the selection is approved. Thank you, counsel. Item 16, this is a mouthful right here. It's a resolution, the City Council authorizes the project initiation for the Fairhope Alley Transit Hub project, and authorizes the mayor to execute the necessary documents for project initiation, authorizes the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Baldwin County Commission outlining the roles of city and county in project management and grant reimbursement process, and adopts the following ALDOT and Baldwin County policies or documents which shall be adopted and applied for this project. These documents are on file with the Office of the City Clerk and are available for public viewing during normal business hours. And I'm just going to abbreviate these descriptions. There are documents with the Baldwin County Commission for procurement procedures, documents with the Baldwin Regional Area Transit System for Title VI programs and limited English proficiency plan updates, disadvantaged business enterprise program. There's also another one, Baldwin County Commission for Subrecipient Questionnaire, and ALDOT's Bureau of Transportation Planning and Modal Programs Transit Section. All of those need to be executed, and this would allow the mayor to execute all the necessary documents to move forward with this transit hub project. Is Sherri Lee here?
Richard is.
Did I get that all correct, Mayor?
I think so.
Does that sound about right?
I hope so. I was writing a few notes, and I apologize.
Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the project initiation and to adopt all of the policies and procedures by ALDOT and Baldwin County, Baldwin Regional Area Transit System that needs to be executed to move this Fairhope Alley Transit Hub project forward.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. And that full resolution is seen on tab 16, if you'd like to read more. Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Okay, item 17 was the item that was added at the beginning of the meeting concerning the tents. And I'll only ask Paige Crawford to come up and explain this just very briefly, if she's waited patiently, so.
Take it easy now. We don't have any problems tonight.
That's right. We have put out an RFQ for the bids for the tent rentals to about eight different rental companies, and nobody responded. Shortly after we closed that bid, we had an informal quote come in from a vendor and an informal non-quote come in from a vendor, saying they weren't going to submit. So the quote that we did get was pretty consistent of what we've seen year after year for tent bids, and, you know, with that being said, it is gonna vary based on how many we will have participate within the New Year's Eve celebration, how many tents we rent. But of course, that rental cost is passed on to the participant who is renting the tents, so. Any questions?
Any questions for Paige? You have that resolution that did, that we did request and receive RFQs after the process that we received them. And this would award this two blue rents. And I did ask Paige earlier today if this was in line with past years' dollar amounts. And, you know, it's kind of like the debris removal contract, you have to put in, you know, a scenario, a typical scenario of what you might expect. And this is in line with all of the past years. And in fact, they're really the only company willing to do it and capable of doing it, from what I understand.
Yeah.
Is that right, Paige?
That is. The scope of work, usually, a lot of the rental companies that we reach out to either don't have the quantities or the size tents available for the project, so.
Right. Okay, and it is under $15,000 as well, so we can take RFQs. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Counsel, I failed to mention something on item 16, and I'm not really sure how to handle this. We may have to back up a little bit. I may ask the city attorney's opinion on this. I got a call from Lee Turner with Single Tax today, just prior to the meeting, and said that in our agreement with the parking garage with the Single Tax Colony, because that's Single Tax Colony land, any plans such as this regarding parking, or not regarding parking, which the transit hub would be the BARTS shuttle portion of that, is not related to necessarily directly to parking, although one would say people are parking there to get on the bus. I was told that they have to approve this and to pass this resolution contingent upon single tax approval. So I meant to mention that, and just with all that had gone on with the meeting, I failed to mention that, so. Mr. Wynn, what do you suggest we do?
Do you know what the basis for Mr. Turner's assertion is? Is it the, I'm not sure what the basis for that assertion is. Why would Single Tax have to approve it? Did we enter into some kind of, we may have entered into an agreement-
That's what he, that's what he specified.
I'd have to go back to find that agreement and look at it. I'm, you know, right now, I can't say.
Well, could we say, could we go by-
I do.
And say subject to-
Sure, Sherri, no.
Subject to their approval if in fact that's necessary.
We do, it's in the lease agreement.
Well, I think Sherri Lee can tell us.
Yeah, it's in the agreement we have with Single Tax. And I was out of town when they had their last board meeting, but Wayne did go to the board meeting and present it to the board, and they were all-
Sounds like they're gonna- Sounds like they're going to.
Yeah, they were all fine with it. And I spoke with Lee separately as well, so everyone was fine with it. But it does require us to notify them if we're going to make changes to it because of the lease. And something will have to be formally drafted when it gets to that point.
But is there anything in that, and I haven't looked at that agreement for a long time, is there anything that stops us from going ahead tonight with approving these intergovernmental agreements?
No, I don't think there's anything, because they could still deny it on their end. It wouldn't affect us.
Yeah, exactly. All we do is approve it on the city's end. Now, it's up to them. We haven't started any construction.
Right.
Or done anything. Therefore, we don't start anything until they approve it.
That's right. And their board member of theirs has been involved in our discussions, too. They've been at the table.
It sounds like they just stop it on their end if they just don't approve it. We don't have to say, subject to.
Correct. They've already passed it, right? 16's already passed.
It's passed. We can repeal the pass and say, subject to any necessary rules.
I think we would just leave it as it is, unless there's a pledge in the future, I'd come back and redo it.
And I'm happy to follow up with Lee. I can follow up with Lee as well and make sure he has everything he needs from us.
Make him aware of the attorney's opinion on that.
Yeah.
I just, he called me at 4:00 today and said that to me.
Okay.
To answer their questions, the fact that somebody may say, well, how's the city feeling about this? Hey, they've been approved.
Well, I think we better be, you know, just think to be careful of executing these documents, and we don't want to go, we don't want to be in a breach of contract with the Single Tax Colony.
Certainly not.
So listen, at least I would say, let's not execute any type of documents until that's been voted on by then. I would ask respectfully that we don't do that. Okay?
You know how.
Take it with you. Turner?
I think so. I'm going under here to see if I can find the agreement, but I will take time tonight trying to, to find it.
Okay. All right. Last item on tonight's agenda is public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, please come to the podium and state your name and address. For the record, you'll be given three minutes.
I'm Mark Walt Kite. I'd like to continue a discussion that Richard started in the work session about the sewer service in Fairhope. I think there's four projects right now that are, the engineers have designed them with low-pressure sewer. They're pretty good engineers, and they're pretty sure they're in conformance with the ordinance, and there's some confusion about that. So I'd like to include you all in on that discussion because I think there's some policy issues related to the cost of building in Fairhope built into this discussion. Sherry Lee and I have talked a lot about affordable housing in Fairhope. Everybody giggles about it as if every house has to be that. But affordable housing starts with a lot cost. I did some research to see what the cost of building Daphne, what it costs to build in Foley, and what it costs to build in Fairhope on the entitlement side, not the cost of construction. Before we even break ground in Fairhope, we're about $5,000 behind on comparable houses. And right now, there's a model in our ordinance which is well-intended to incentivize us to use gravity sewer, which has pros and cons and many applications, and so does low-pressure sewer. But basically, at the end of the day, the city wants every lot owner, no matter what size, to be prepared to spend five times the cost of a grinder pump on there to support a gravity sewer system. And once again, that's neither right or wrong. It's in the ordinance right now, and the four projects before the planning commission right now, which are waiting utility approval, believe they meet that standard, but they haven't gotten approval yet. But the thing you all might want to think about, and the reason I thought you all might be interested in this, I'm not sure how policies is set, but if we view ourselves as a pro-growth city, let's have policies that reinforce that. Because take the $5,000 that we're behind already, add the $12,000, I'll call it gravity sewer burden, you're into a $17,000 per-lot burden. Now, that's a $50,000 lot or a $100,000 lot. Amortize that $17,000, and that's about 100 bucks a month. And for a lot of homeowners, that's real money. I mean, we were up here talking a moment ago about $3,000 issues, and they're pretty